Well, good evening. Thank you all for being here tonight. I appreciate your attendance tonight. I'm Greg Ferris, President of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees, and I hereby call this Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting to order. It's now 6:02 PM. And we do certify our quorum as present that the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required by law. The month meetings are open to the public. Although the meetings are public, comments and questions from the audience will be confined to the time designated for citizens to address the board. At this time, it's now 6:03 PM, we'll take item 16 out of order and the board will convene into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551-074, 551-071, 551-072. No voting will take place in the closed session. Any action that the board wishes to take as a result of those discussions will be taken into consideration and then we reconvene back into open session after the board meeting and when the time arises. Thank you very much. It's good to see everybody tonight. Thank you for joining us. We're reconvening to open session at this time. We will now ask Jeremy Suter from Family Cathedral Forney to come lead us in invocation. If you would please all rise.
Thank you. Let's pray. Our most gracious God, we thank you for giving us another day of life and I thank you for this wonderful school district that cares so much for the students, the employees, and the community, and the parents as well. I pray that you continue to give this board wisdom and guide this wonderful school district in the direction that it needs to go. Thank you for a school district that leads by example and sets a standard, not just across the state of Texas, but around this nation. And we pray and we ask this, in Jesus' name, amen and amen.
He may be seated. Thank you, Jeremy. We appreciate that. At this time, we're going to move on and have our pledges. And right now, I'd like to introduce Dr. Barbie Knack, Principal for Ray Intermediate School. She'll introduce our Secondary Student of the Month. And then following that with Ms. Danielle Binger, who are Principal at Lewis Elementary, to introduce our Elementary Student of the Month.
Good evening. I'm super excited to introduce to you Jada. Jada is a sixth grade student at Ray. She is here tonight with her mom, and her mom is right in the second row. I told her mom, make sure to video this because it's a memory that she'd like to keep. Her favorite subjects in school are math and art. Outside of school, Jada makes jewelry and enjoys reading, especially graphic novels. After high school, Jada would like to attend Texas Tech University and study to become a doctor. Jada is new to Forney ISD but has already made an incredible impression at Ray. When nominated for this honor, Jada's teachers had this to say about her. Jada has done an amazing job at transitioning to a new school. Jada is respectful and kind to her teachers and peers. She comes to class with a smile and a positive attitude every day. She is truly a gem. Academically, she is excelling in all of her classes. She puts forth all of her effort and Jada is an exemplary student each and every day. She never lets anything get in her way of being amazing. She has high character and is self-motivated. She is a true role model to those around her and leads by example. We can't wait to see what the future holds for this Ray Eagle. Join me in celebrating such an outrageous student, Jada Anyetti.
It is my honor to introduce Ms. Haven Green as our Lewis Elementary Student of the Month. Haven is a fourth grade student who is incredibly focused on her lessons and always eager to participate. She shows kindness and compassion to all her peers and adults. She is always finding ways to brighten up the day of those around her, especially with her beautiful smile and homemade artwork. She is a shining star on our campus and a true example of what an exceptional student looks like. Please help me congratulate Haven Green.
Would you rise, please, as they lead us in our pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Never say take that picture, then we'll take one with you, okay? At this time, I'll turn the microphone to Mr. Mario Luna, Director of Fine Arts.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, and School Board. We've got two ensembles to present here. The first one is Jackson Middle School Honors Band. And what this is, is a, so it was selected as a national winner for the 2023 Mark of Excellence National Win-Band submission. What this is, is an online submission. There's two categories, per se. There's a national side and a committed side. And our two ensembles were selected as national winners. So there was 442 entries from the United States that were selected, over 40 states. This is, this is our high school group, right? Yep, this is our middle school. I was like, man, these are some big kids up here. They're still coming in. So this was Class AA. There was 23 groups that were selected. And just to give you an idea, the other 22 schools were in existence on an average of about 21 years, and these students did this in two years. So, I mean, this is a huge deal. At the last School Board meeting, if you recall, this is the same group that placed 11th in the state. So, huge honor. I think we're going to need to squeeze in, friends. Squeeze, 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 squeeze. Squeeze, 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 squeeze. There we go. There we go. Here we go. One, two, and three. So, if you know Mr. Graves, he always has to take one of these pictures with every group he does. Special thanks to Mr. Graves, Masala, Mr. Shea, and Mr. Sakai. Just so you know, too, some of these students in this group are current ninth graders, so they had a marching band practice that they finished early at North Forney to rush over here, so. Way, special thanks to our band directors at North Forney. And then our second group here is our Forney High School Wind Ensemble. All same information, for the most part, there was 442 entries, and again, over 40 states. In Class 5A, they only selected eight groups, seven from Texas and one from Kentucky. So, this is the same group that placed fifth in the state back this summer over at our TBA conference. So, this is our Forney High School Wind Ensemble under the direction of Mr. Cody Newman.
This is maybe half of them. The rest are in college now.
He's not at, yeah. Thank you for all being here tonight. Now, we're going to move on to our next item with some staff recognitions. Mr. Luna, I think you're going to continue.
Yes. Let me wait a brief second while all these parents, uh...
Where y'all going? There's no refreshments out there.
Chick-fil-A or crumble cookie? I think someone needs to get Mr. Graves, too. So, if you don't know Mr. Graves, and there's parents all around him, it's really hard to get him away from everyone because everyone wants to talk to him. He's just a special educator that we have, just like our rest of our faculty, so...
One again.
Okay. I mean, I can say some jokes.
He's with his paparazzi.
See? Okay, so, and all the kids are coming back in, see? Okay, so, we'll take some pictures while I read some of the scripts so we can knock this out, so. Dr. Terry, sorry. Mr. Graves was recognized by the CMA Foundation for being named one of the 2023 Music Teachers of Excellence. They selected 30 educators from across the United States were selected for this award. He is finishing up his 16th year in education and he's been our band director at Jackson since 2021. So, I mean, just a huge honor. I mean, we've been up here for District Teacher of the Year, we've been up here for District Teacher of the Year, we've been up here for the Yamaha 40 Under 40, we're doing this.
Executive Director of Leadership Development and Professional Learning, should introduce our principals.
Thank you, School Board, and Dr. Terry, for the opportunity to recognize these leaders.
It's not because we submit these contests and he wins them. It's just, I mean, he is a true asset to our school district.
I've asked Ms. Courtney Rodriguez to join me as we have been honored to work closely
So, I mean, just huge congrats.
with these individuals over the past few months.
And I was told on Friday, he told me at the football game that, I guess this went so well
We have been privileged to walk their halls with them and to watch them in action.
that he got invited to the CMAs.
Recently, we have witnessed the challenging landscape of public education.
So, he's going to the CMAs. About two weeks ago, he was in Nashville for the ceremony and we thought that was the
However, when working with these principals, they paint a very different picture. We have seen them on the floor with students, engaging them, reading with them, laughing, smiling. Students stop them in the hallway to wave, hug, or give them a fist bump.
entire thing, but now that you got told that he's going to the CMAs now, so.
They know their students. They ask about karate tournaments, football games, and personal weekend events.
Mr. Graves, congratulations.
There's much more to these composed individuals that you probably do not get to see. We remind them of the importance of work-life balance, but to them, their school is also their family. They lead with a servant's heart and a dedication like no other. They are the biggest supporters of their staff, their students, and the families in our community. They carry great pride in serving their campuses as well as Forney ISD. Forney family is not a phrase, but their leadership style. For these dedicated individuals before you, being a principal in Forney ISD is more than a job. It's their passion. It's their heart. Forney ISD, please join us as we pause to appreciate these devoted leaders. As we call your name, please join us up front.
Clayman Elementary, Ashley Tony. Criswell Elementary, Maribel Sanchez. Crosby Elementary, Wendy Bailey. ECC, Ashley Rideout. Ms. Katie Wilson could not be with us tonight, but she represents Johnson Elementary. Ray Intermediate, Dr. Barbie Knack. Jackson Middle School, Molly Pearl. Warren Middle School, Josh Garcia. Forney Learning Academy, Dr. Stephanie Leach. Forney High School, Dr. Wes Benjamin. Unable to be with us tonight is Jennifer Golson, representing the 1012 campus at Forney High School. Forney High School, Dr. Justin James. North Forney High School, Michael Jung. North Forney High School, Dr. Jara Patton. North Forney High School, Jason Mood. And unable to be with us tonight is Holly Malone, representing Virtual Academy. Let me go back to the beginning.
We appreciate all of you and your leadership and all that you do for our community. Moving on to item C now is our community recognition. And at this time, I'll ask Dr. Judy Weber if she would come to the microphone for a presentation.
One last recap on the amazing principal group we have. So, this is an exciting award to get to bring to you tonight, Mr. Ferris and Dr. Terry. The Texas Association of School Administrators and the Texas Association of School Boards, TASSA and TASB, honored 46 projects at the last week's convention in the 2023-2024 Exhibit of School Architecture. This exhibit of new and renovated Texas school facilities includes projects from 38 school districts, three colleges, that were submitted by 15 architectural firms. Eligible projects are newly constructed or their renovated public education facilities completed in the last five years and not previously submitted. The Exhibit of School Architecture awards are given at the discretion of a 12-member jury, which includes four School Board members, four school administrators, and four members from the Association for Learning Environments. The juried exhibits awarded the Star of Distinction for Excellence to 23 of the projects in one or more of the following six areas: for design, value, innovation, community, planning, school transformation. Jackson Middle School and Rhodes Intermediate Schools were selected and earned a Star of Distinction recognition for excellence in design, value, and wellness, which is an approach that focuses on supporting the whole child. So, I'd like to invite Kate Up from Huckabee to accept this.
How about our principals, too? Yeah, we're not the same. Yeah, Stacy's there. Come on, Stacy. Our next item is recess. So, we'll take a brief recess at this time and we'll start back. Thank you. Well, thank you all for staying for the second half. We'll get back here. Picking up on item number six, Public Hearing of Financial Rating System of Texas, presented by Mr. John Chase. This is a public hearing, so I have a motion to call the public hearing to order, please. Have a motion, Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Ms. Burkhalter? Mr. Chase, the mic is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. So, every year, the Texas Education Agency publishes the Financial Accountability Rating, or the First Rating, as it's affectionately known, for each school district and open enrollment charter school in the state. The purpose of the rating is to measure the quality of financial management practices and to improve performance in the management of financial resources. This is just, the rating includes 20 indicators and they can be divided into Critical, Sovereignty, and Financial Competency sections. A maximum of 100 points can be awarded and a rating of A, B, C, or F can be assigned. Now, tonight's rating that we're going to discuss, the data that was used to develop that rating was from fiscal year 2022. was from fiscal year 2022. Starting off with the Critical indicators, these are affectionately known as that because failing to meet any one of these benchmarks is an automatic failure of the report. You get an automatic F, so they're pretty important. First off is, you know, did we file our annual financial report on time? Did we get an unmodified audit opinion? Do we have compliance with debt service repayment agreement? In other words, do we default on any of our debt? Again, super important. Timely payment of TRS, Texas Workforce Commission, and IRS tax payments. Do we make all those on time and not delinquent on any of those? And then the last one there is, it's not being scored. It has been scored for the last few years. There's some reasons for that. But I'm not really going to get into a whole lot of that tonight, but there's some stuff that we have to present in the audit report for our portion of pension liabilities and things like that. And so they haven't really, I think, come up with a way that they're going to measure that going forward. And so they're just not rating that at this point. But all the other ones, we pass with flying colors, so no problems there. Again, we're not going to get an F rating tonight, so that's good news. As far, moving on to the Financial Solvency indicators, these are the ratios that are derived from the financial data that gets submitted in our annual financial report. And it measures, starting off with, do we have a decline in our fund balance of more than 25% over the last three years? Did we have more than 90 days of cash on hand? Was our current assets-to-current liability ratio better than, you know, at least three to one? In other words, we had $3 of current assets to every dollar of liability? Was our revenues greater than our expenditures? And then the last couple, number, the first one, it didn't get scored this year. And there's probably, I think there's four of the indicators, besides, actually, two more after this one, that's not getting scored because of the coronavirus pandemic. The state recognized that there's certain instances that this caused a lot of problems with budgets and ratios and things that's used in this indicator system. And so they didn't want to penalize school districts because of that. And so as a consequence, they just gave everybody max points on that. But, you know, our budget to actual revenue variance is, we didn't have any, you know, over 10% variance anyway, but they didn't score it. We got max points on it. And then finally, the long-term liabilities, no more than 60% of the total assets. Again, we get an automatic pass on this because we're a fast-growth district. And they recognize that we're issuing a lot of bonds in order to keep up with the growth and build schools. And so happy to say, in these six areas here, that we got max points on those. Moving on to the last three in the solvency area. Was our long-term debt per $100 of assessed value less than four to one? Was our administrative cost ratio less than eight and a half percent? And then number 14 again, did we have a student-to-total staff decline of less than 15%? Again, this one wasn't scored because of the coronavirus pandemic. The state gave us a lot of federal dollars to try to bridge the gap, the learning gaps that we had with our student body. And so, you know, they recognize the fact that we were putting on a lot of staff in order for that to happen. So they weren't going to penalize districts for that. So just starting off with number 12. Again, to get max points on this, you can have no more than a four to one ratio. Our actual ratio is 11 and a half to one, so we lost eight points in this category. I would point out, again, we are issuing a lot of bonds in order to keep up with the growth. Also point out that our assessed values year over year for the last five years have been growing at a clip of about almost 20%, you know, last two years specifically. But even before that, it was in the high teens. And so as our growth, if it keeps growing at that pace, you know, when our debt issuance slows, and it will slow, you know, we won't have to build as many schools over time, that that ratio will start getting better again. As far as administrative cost ratio, our ratio is actually 7.4%. So we met that with no problem. So we're in good shape there. And then finally, moving on to the, last but not least, the competency indicators. And again, these aren't really ratios that are determined with our annual financial report data that gets submitted, but it's more competencies that the state looks at to say, you know, what are sound business practices for a school system? And just to start off with, you know, are ADA projections, are they within, are the actuals very similar to what we projected? They didn't score this one again this year because of the coronavirus pandemic, you know, I think over the last few years. Normally, your average day of attendance is about 95 to 96% of your enrollment in the last couple of years because there was a lot of absences and things like that, that that was not really, you know, possible in a lot of districts. And so they gave everybody max points on that because they weren't going to penalize this for something that was not within our control. The next set of data points here is that we submit our PMS data. They compare that to our annual financial report. Was it very similar, with no more than a 3% variance, I think? Again, our data is always in pretty good shape when it comes to that. And then the next two is, did the auditor report any weaknesses in internal controls or any material instances of noncompliance in federal grants? And I'm happy to report that they did not report any of those problems. And then on our website postings, that we post our financial, annual financial reports, that we post our budgets, that we post our tax information. All that stuff is out there under the Finance and Budget webpage. You can go out there and look at it anytime you'd like. And so we got, met all those indicators. And then finally, the last one is, did we discuss changes in impact in local, state, and federal and funding before the budget was adopted? As the boards are aware, we spent a lot of time, I would say, starting in about January, but really more so in December, we're planning at the admin level. But we're developing our revenue projections. We're facilitating our staffing plans in February. We're talking about the relationship between our property values and our tax collections and how that impacts state aid and that there's an inverse relationship with that, that the higher, you know, tax collections you have on a per pupil basis, the lower amount of state aid that we're going to get. So I think we do a pretty good job there and we have no problems with keeping the board up to date on that. So we're good there. So in the final analysis, we scored a 92 this year. That is an A or superior rating. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions you might have about the rating.
Thank you, Mr. Chase, for your presentation. Are there any questions from the board? You must have answered all their questions, John. We appreciate the presentation. And it's just another example of your thorough coverage of everything and all the details. That's what gets us that A rating, so thank you. Dr. Terry, have comments?
Just one real quick. John, how many years in a row is this?
It's like, at least 16, maybe. I don't know, something, 10, maybe, something like that. I don't know. I'm not sure.
What is it? First rate?
Eight, okay.
Yeah, eight years in a row of A rating, John. And so just wanted to compliment our staff for that. You and your staff just do a wonderful job with this every year. And I know it's a lot of work, a lot of hours, but away from your families. But just wanted to say thank you because you guys are doing a great job keeping us solvent and with a conservative approach, so thank you.
Thank you so much. With no further questions, then may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Ferris, that motion to close the public hearing?
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our public hearing is now closed at 7:41. Moving on then to item seven, our reports, the next three items, reports only, require no action from the board. First one is our monthly financial report, so Mr. Chase will maintain the microphone. Mr. Chase?
Thank you. Tonight, the financial report is for operating results through August 2023. Starting off with the general fund. Year-to-date revenue collected was $2.7 million, and this is 1% of the amount estimated. And last year, at the same point in time, we were also at 1%. Would point out that we did, the state aid that we did collect in August was about $7.3 million. So we have cash flow. It's just the revenue, that revenue is actually recognized in the prior year because it's based on attendance in the prior year. Moving on to expenditures, year-to-date is $30.6 million or 16% of the amount appropriated, excuse me. As comparison, last year, we were at 18%. You might have noticed that in the data processing budget that we were 34% expended. And this is, you know, a little elevated comparatively speaking. When you figure we were about 16 or 17% expended if you were just doing it on a month-to-month basis. But I think I pointed this out last month, that we have a lot of software licenses and software support agreements. They're front-loaded in our budget. And we spend those all upfront. And so that just caused that ratio to kind of go up a little higher than what all the other ones are. But no cause of concern there. We're going to be fine. Moving on to food service, revenue year-to-date collected was $771,000. That's 10% of the amount estimated. $236,000, that could further be broken down into $236,000 was from student lunch sales and all-a-car sales. $137,000 was for supply chain assistance we got from the federal government. And then finally, the $372,000 was for student lunch and breakfast program sales. And I would point out that that's about 43% higher than it was last year. You know, we partnered up with Airmark this year. And I think some of the things that they're doing within our lunch and breakfast program, that's a direct result of why that ratio is higher like it is. I think last year, we collected about $260,000, I think, in the month of August. Now, there is one extra day of sales in there because I think last year, we had maybe 15 days, and this is 16 days. But all in all, it's still up from the prior year, is the point. And I think, you know, Airmark is helping us do some things in our program that's, I think, very positive. As far as reimbursable meals served, we had almost $104,000 that we served during the month of August. And that's up 46%. And you'd think the 43 and 46 would be almost equal. But after the coronavirus pandemic ended, our reimbursement rates actually went down a little bit. And so the amount that they gave us per meal is actually a little bit down. Not a lot, but a little bit. And that's the reason why those numbers aren't exactly the same. They just gave people more assistance through that pandemic because of supply chain issues and things of that nature. But all in all, you know, last year, we collected about 8% at this point. Right now, we're at 10%, so we're looking really good revenue-wise. Moving on to expenditures, year-to-date is $543,000. That's 6% of the amount appropriated. And for comparative purposes, we were at 5% last year. And then the debt service fund, year-to-date revenue collected there was $597,000. Again, our heavy tax collections, they won't start in earnest until probably end of October, starting in November, December, January, really. So right now, all we're really collecting is delinquent taxes or taxes from prior years. But at the same point in time last year, we were also at 1%. And then our expenditures, year-to-date, we had $31.1 million in the month of August that we had our principal and interest payment on, our semi-annual principal and interest payments on our debt. That's 58% of the amount appropriated, which last year, at the same point in time, we were at 59%. So that's pretty well where we expected it to be. And then to wrap it up, finally, our cash position, cash and investment position at the end of August, when our general fund, food service, debt service, and capital project fund combined is $454 million. And so that's the finance report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. I hear none. Moving on then to summary of finance report.
So, and we talk a lot about this, and that kind of goes back to that first report, and are we keeping the board up to date on our financial position in the district? And so just by way of review, the summary of the finance report is the report that the state issues that shows either how much their state is going to send us cash flow on an annual basis versus, you know, what we expect we might earn based on our ADA and other things that go into that formula. And so this is the time of the year that we get what they call the near-final summaries of finances. And they publish that in September, and it's for the prior year. So we've turned in all of our average daily attendance, and they have all our tax collection data in order to, for them to pretty much get our final entitlement. I mean, there'll be some small little changes between now and next March, but they're not going to be significant. So what's in this report is pretty much what we should, you know, earn as a district. And so, again, we've talked about this several times in the past. But usually, the two columns are the LPE, your Legislative Planning Estimate, and the DPE, which is the District Planning Estimate. But now it says near-final because it's the near-final, you know, so our actual entitlement's been updated with all of our actual data. And so just looking at the report, we just pulled some snippets out. Just first off, I would say that, you know, legislatively, they had planned on us having 14,216 students in average daily attendance. We actually turned in 14,900. So, you know, we're looking at 700 more students, basically, that we had that they didn't pay us throughout the year on. And as far as the property values, they did load in what our property values. And we had just short of, you know, 4.4, excuse me, $8.4 billion of property value. And that's been adjusted to determine what our local share is in the funding formula. And so when you look, what we were actually entitled to receive was $68.7 million on the general fund side, and on the debt service side, it was about $825,000. And so when you look at the final page of the report in row number seven, that just showed you there, that's a positive number. That means that they underpaid us, that we were entitled to receive $9.2 million that we hadn't, at the time this report was issued, we hadn't received yet. Now, this report was issued first of September, that first week of September, somewhere in that timeframe. And last week, we actually got the money. So they have paid us this balance now, and they don't owe it to us anymore. And so just to wrap it up, the total state aid we received was, by August 31st, was $59.4 million. What we actually earned was $68.6. They underpaid us $9.2. And so that underpayment that we received in September, we actually recognized that as revenue in the prior fiscal year. So, and that's pretty much the summary of the finance. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I hear none. Thank you, Mr. Chase. Next item is item C, Master Planning Report. And Dr. Terry, I'll turn it over to you at this time to introduce our speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Ms. Moore-Sack's not able to be with us tonight, but I'm going to do what she normally does, and that's turn it over to Jeff Fisher with Gallagher Construction to present our master planning update. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, President Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board. As always, it's good to be with you. Good to see you. I will run through these master planning slides for you. First up, we have the Keith Bell Opportunity Center, the OC. As you all know, Phase 1 opened back in August and seems to be going quite well over there. We're working diligently on Phase 2. As you can see in the picture in the top there, the seating in the arena is in. And if you have not had a chance to walk in there and look at that, you should do that because it's pretty impressive. It's a, that's a lot of seats, a lot of seats. But it'll be good to have graduation in there, so. We're still on schedule to get that finished up by the end of the year and get that turned over to you, the rest of it turned over to you. So it's coming along quite well. North Forney High School freshman center addition is coming along good. They're finishing up the veneer brickwork on the outside, getting ready to put the metal panels on, finishes, or sheet rock, taping bed, things like that. It's coming along on the inside, making a big push on that one to get it ready to get open here at the end of the year as well. There's a few more pictures of it, just the, you can see the two pictures in the bottom right there. They are showing the prep for the metal panels. And again, those will be starting fairly quickly here. Phase 2 over at North Forney, the arena and stadium addition. As you can see there, foundation works going. There's quite a bit of paving on the ground right now. They got held up a little bit with a little bit of rain that we got last week, but it wasn't enough to affect us too bad. So basically, just site work and foundation work happening on that project. Forney High School ninth-grade center, it's in basically the same shape as the North Forney ninth-grade center. Again, you can see that bottom picture looks like it's almost the exact same as what we have over at North. So getting ready to install the metal panels interior-wise, getting finishes on the walls in a lot of the areas, and buttoning up the taping bed and sheet rock on those. There's some more pictures. The picture you see there on the top that looks like it doesn't have a roof, that's actually where the skylight goes. So it will have something covering the stairs up. They've actually started on the skylight over at North. I didn't mention that. And they'll be starting on this one pretty soon. You can see in the other two pictures, just the finished work going on. And Phase 2, the fieldhouse over at Forney High School. Again, underground work, site work going on. The foundation piers, you can see in on the top picture there. We got past a little bit of a hiccup that we had with the pier drilling a couple of weeks ago and made sure that homecoming happened. So kudos to all of our team and all of the Forney ISD team that worked together to get that done. That kept me from staying up all night that night. It was good. Teamer Middle School is coming along real well. The foundation's done, slabs are basically done. You can see a lot of the walls going up, the insulating concrete formwork walls coming along well. In the bottom right picture there, you can see the storm shelter walls are up, and they're getting ready to pour the concrete slab on top of that. So that's coming along well. That project's moving very well. Similarly, with Warren. That project's moving very well. Similarly with Warren, you can see the ICF walls going up there on the bottom and the CMU walls being built on the top. They're just continuing to move forward with both of those projects really quite well. Ed Wilson Elementary School, it's moving really well. They've got most of the slabs done. I think they have one area slab left to pour. And as you can see on the top picture, they've started the ICF walls and they've got the site work and things coming along as well on that one. Innovation Way Expansion, I really consider that part of the Ed Wilson project. That's the road that goes there in front down to the new, from roundabout one to roundabout two. And that's, they've got the paving done. They've got the utilities in. They're really working on finishing grading and getting it ready to go. And then Ray Elm, that's a, it used to be Ray Elementary, whenever we built it, it was. Ray Intermediate School, it's been that way for a while, right? We've just really gotten started on it on Phase One. Of course, Phase One, we've got to get the new teacher parking in and the new bus route done before we can start on the actual building part of it because the building goes where the current teacher parking is. So as you can see, we're just working on the dirt work and getting ready to get the parking lot put in. Then we'll be moving forward with the rest of it. I believe that finishes us up. I will be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all guys for keeping us on schedule. Next is item number eight, public forum. At this time, nobody signed up to speak. We're moving on to item nine, consent agenda. Nine A is approved in minutes from September eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. Nine B approved the budget amendment. Nine C approved the DEC local. That's the second and final. Nine D approved workers' compensation pool insurance premium. Nine E approved the purchasing cooperative membership. And nine F approved their furniture purchases. The board may act on any of these individually or collectively to have a motion from the board.
Mr. Ferris, I believe that we approved the consent agenda as presented collectively.
Ms. Bateman's made a motion for collective. Second?
Second.
Is that Dr. Armutya?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. Number ten, consideration approved annual financial audit. Mr. Chase, come back to the microphone, please.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. As the boards are aware, a couple of years ago, we actually had a request for qualifications and selected Weaver and Tidwell to do our independent audit for us. The last one, the first one they did was last year. This is the second, the second year that they've done our audit. Tonight, we have Claire Wooton here to discuss the results of that audit with you. She's the senior audit manager at Weaver and Tidwell on our, on this engagement. And I think they started their field work, I believe they were here about a week in June and then they came back in September and spent about three weeks going through all of our information and looking, you know, drafting our financial reports for us. So without further ado, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Claire and let her kind of discuss her findings with you. Claire?
Just, just.
Thank you. All right. Board of trustees and Dr. Terry, thank you for having me here today. I'll go through this presentation that I have before you. I'll do a brief introduction of myself, the audit process, go through our results, discuss some required communications that we're required to present to you as governance, go through some quick financial highlights, and then discuss any questions you all may have. So first, it's the same, exact same engagement team as you all had last year, down to the audit staff as well. So Sarah Dempsey, the engagement partner, couldn't be here tonight. She was sick, so I stepped in for her as well. But I was the senior manager on the engagement last year. And then including our audit senior and audit associate. So we got to have the entire team back again. It really helps with that smooth transition year to year to have the exact same team so that we don't have to relearn anything from the staff and we can make that transition right into the next fiscal year. So here for our engagement timeline, like John said, we came out a week in June and performed those interim audit procedures. So we met with the finance staff and walked through internal controls over key transaction cycles. We did that during June, started our testing of internal controls during final field work. We actually came out a week early this year, starting August twenty-eighth, and that really helped us get kind of a little bit more of a review over all the numbers before we finalized the audit report. So that was extra helpful this year. And then we're here tonight for the Board of Trustees meeting. And then throughout the year, we just like to say that we are always available to discuss new GASB pronouncements or if there's any transactions that are different or that this finance team haven't seen before. We're always willing to walk through transactions, review research, things like that. So our audit process, we perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, generally accepted government auditing standards, and then the Single Audit Act, which is also under the uniform guidance. So that second piece covers your federal awards. The audit process, we also perform under a risk-based approach. So we're identifying those areas to your district that we think are the riskiest areas. So noting improper revenue recognition is like revenue being misstated or receivables being misstated, foundation aid, which is the state revenue program, and then any journal entries that the finance team is posting, that's where we think the highest risk areas could be. So like I said, we came out a week in June. We start our planning procedures during that period. We're performing a risk assessment, which areas we think are our highest risk. We're performing those walkthroughs of internal controls. So those key transaction cycles and the cash dispersments process, the cash receipts, including state and federal receipts, how cash is coming in through the door, how it's being recorded, how it's being sent to the bank, payroll process, how checks are being cut, how employees are starting through the hire process, the termination process, et cetera, the budget process, that period from start to be, from start to finish, and then the month and year-end close process. We also identified the major federal financial assistance programs and test compliance over those. So this year for our major programs, we selected ESER. If you'll remember, ESER was also selected last year. The OMB and Department of Education came together and decided that because that funding was so significant that it was deemed high-risk and has to be tested, as long as that ESER funding is significant and over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, it must be tested as a high-risk program every year until that money dwindles down. So we've tested it again. And then child nutrition, it was due to be tested. Large programs over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars must be tested at least once every two years, or once every three years, so on that two-year cycle. So together, SR two, three, and three supplemental, combined with child nutrition cluster, accounted for seventy-one percent of your federal financial assistance and that's what we focused our testing on during fiscal twenty-three. We also looked at compliance testing over the PFIA or your Public Funds Investment Act. So that's how investments, like your pool, like text pool and things like that are recorded and invested in. And then also, we tested controls over the cash dispersments and payroll process that we identified during those walkthroughs. We also tested the controls over the bidding process, so with those large construction projects. And then also looked at any other TEA compliance, like compliance requirements with pick allotments and things like that. During September, that last week of August, we came out, once those numbers were final, once the finance team had time to book all those year-end journal entries, we came back out. We wrapped up the single audit testing, which is your compliance and then controls over that compliance for those major programs. We wrapped up capital projects testing. And then using a combination of analytics, vouching of material transactions and sampling, we tested the year-end balances. And then we also assisted with the preparation of the annual financial report. So John and his team, they finalized all the numbers. They're providing us a key financial statements just through a trial balance. And then we make it pretty and put it all into a financial report after we audit it. So all of the journal entries, his team prepared and we just audited it and put it into this financial statement. So now to present our results, what we all want to hear, we have issued the independent auditor's report over the financial statements with an unmodified opinion. So that's the cleanest opinion you can get. We have also issued the independent auditor's report over internal control, over financial reporting, and on compliance in accordance with government auditing standards. And there were no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies noted. And then we've also issued the independent auditor's report on compliance with, for each major program, and a report on internal control over compliance in accordance with the uniform guidance. And we've issued an unmodified opinion there with no findings noted. So that very first bullet point, that opinion is near the beginning of your report. The last two bullet points, those opinions are in the back, near your federal audit programs. Those opinions are back there. So our required communications that we're required to note to you. So again, we have issued an unmodified opinion over the financial statements and that's again, under our responsibility, under generally accepted auditing standards. We've also issued our report noting no findings under government auditing standards. And then we've issued our unmodified opinion on compliance. So those are those three opinions that I was telling you about. I'm required to notify you of any unusual transactions or the adoption of new accounting principles. There was the adoption of GASB ninety-six, which you may all have heard about, is the, it's called Sabidas or subscription-based IT arrangements. As John was mentioning earlier in his presentations, most of those are all paid for upfront or are annual licenses and therefore considered short-term. So it did not have any significant impact on your financial statements at all. We did not note any fraud or illegal acts. And then we noted no material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting. And then as well as internal control over compliance, we noted no material weaknesses there as well. Management judgments and accounting estimates were required to identify those, but we have evaluated all of those and deemed them free from management's bias. And then we noted no difficulties encountered. John and his team were so helpful. They had a trial balance ready for us when we asked for it. Anytime we had questions, they were able to give us answers quickly. They put their work down to help us get through things quickly. So that was very helpful for us. Management representation, so upon our, when we are ready to issue the financial statements, our opinion over those, we ask John and Dr. Terry to sign a management rep letter, which is them taking responsibility over the financial statements. And they have signed that letter and it's dated the same date as our opinion. Auditor independence, we note, oh, I skipped one, management consultations. We're not aware of management going out to any other firms to shop for a different opinion over the financial statements or try to find different answers to questions that we've given them. So we noted no issues there. Auditor independence, we are independent as a firm and as an audit team. We have no independence issues to note. Audit adjustments, again, like I was saying, that this audit in particular is an extremely clean audit. So we did not, beyond pension and OPEB really, which is all provided by TRS, we did not have any audit adjustments. John and his team identified all items, even if it was after the trial balance they were, was originally given to us. They were able to provide us journal entries for any cleanup items that they noted on their end, bring them through our trial balance into our audit software, and we had no additional adjustments to note. So there were no past adjustments either, which means adjustments that we consider small enough to pass, we noted none of those either. And then any other material written communications that are not presented to you, we're required to let you know and there are none. So everything we have issued, you have in front of you. So to cover some quick financial highlights, so a comparison of revenues by source for your governmental funds in quick pie chart, your total local revenue grew last, in fiscal twenty-three compared to fiscal twenty-two. That's that biggest piece. And so your next is your state revenue and your federal revenue. Your fiscal revenue totaled two-hundred-and-thirty-five-point-two million for your governmental funds, which is an increase of fifty-point-three million or twenty-seven percent compared to fiscal twenty-two. So that local and intermediate source, that piece of the pie graph grew, it increased forty-one-point-nine million, which was primarily due to twenty-six-point-four million increase in property tax revenue, which was due to the increased values, and then fourteen-point-four million due to an increase in interest income. And then your state program revenue increased eleven-point-zero million. That's due to state aid revenue and that increased eight-point-one million itself. And then federal program revenues decreased two-point-six million compared to prior year, and that's due to three million decrease in federal child nutrition over fiscal twenty-two. So next is your expenditures. Oh, this is just your revenues year to year over the last three years. So you can really see in fiscal twenty-three, that local revenue really shot up there. Your state program revenue has gone up just slightly every year. And then your federal program revenue kind of just varies based on those federal programs. Here we go. Next is our governmental fund expenditures in pie graph form. So you can see what your largest is compared to your smallest, the largest being your facilities acquisition and construction. So that's your really capital outlay that you're spending on those projects. So that bond money's coming in and you're actually spending it. So for fiscal year twenty-three, your expenditures totaled forty, four-hundred-and-sixty-three-point-five million, which is an increase of a hundred-and-forty-nine-point-two million or forty-seven percent compared to fiscal twenty-two. Those changes are an increase of twenty-eight-point-five million in payroll. That's due to a twenty-five percent increase in employees, mostly in teachers. Debt service expenditures increased three million due to principal payments and bond issuance costs. And that's really due to the issuance of the series twenty-twenty-two C refunding and series twenty-twenty-two B building bonds. And then lastly, the largest piece of that increase over prior year is facilities acquisition and construction, which increased a hundred-and-ten-point-eight million totaling two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-point-four million. But that's continued construction on Keith Bell, Warren and Teemer Middle Schools, elementary schools number ten and eleven, and Fornie and North Fornie High School expansions. So we've seen all those great pictures from those expansions and buildings. So it's right here in the numbers as well. So just that comparison over the last three years and you can really see that facilities acquisition and construction really shoot up. So that's where that is coming from. Last financial highlight slide is talking about your fund balance. So your governmental funds fund balance in fiscal twenty-three was a combined ending amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-point-seven million. That is broken out by the general fund of fifty-nine-point-two, your debt service at fifty-six-point-nine, capital projects at two-hundred-point-eight, and your non-major governmental at three-point-eight totaling your three-twenty-seven, three-hundred-and-twenty-point-seven. That's also on the far right side, you'll see it's broken down with non-spendable. That's items that have already been spent. So those prepaid, like I was talking about, those prepaid, like subscription IT arrangements or software licenses. The largest piece of it is being, is restricted. That's from bond proceeds that are coming in through the capital projects fund. They're legally restricted to be spent on those projects. So that two-hundred-point-eight million in the capital projects, that's sitting there to be spent on those projects. So it's all considered restricted. And then same with those funds in the debt service. They're legally restricted to be used for the future payment of bond principal and interest. So your governmental funds fund balance increased by approximately seventy-nine-point-nine million, or yes, it increased by seventy-nine-point-nine million. There was a twenty-seven-point-zero million increase in the debt service fund balance, primarily due to that increase in property tax revenue from the issuance of the twenty-twenty-two C refunding bonds. There was a forty-nine-point-five million increase in the capital projects fund fund balance, which was the result of increased capital project spending on those construction projects. And then it was also offset by the issuance of two-hundred-and-ninety-point-nine million in building bonds. The increase of two-point-seven million dollars in fund balance in the general fund, which was due to increased property tax revenue and state aid. And then non-major funds increased fund balance seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand due to that food service fund, which increased six-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand. And that's all I have for you today, but I would like to open the floor for any questions that you all may have. that you all may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions from the board? I hear none, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chase?
Yeah, just a couple of quick points. The board's stated goal on our fund balance and the general fund is to have at least two, two months of, of operating funds in that fund balance. As Claire pointed out tonight, our, our general fund balance is 59.2 million. 1.8 of that is assigned for prepayments and, and things, and projects that we started last year that didn't get completed by the end of the fiscal year, and so some of the FFNE and things of that nature. So that was about 1.8 of that, and, and then another 10 million, as, as you guys will, will remember, we earmarked for future debt service payments. And so our actual unassigned fund balance then would be down to 45 and a half, which is about 3.4 months of operating expenses, certainly well above the, the two, two months that, that the board's stated goal is. So all in all, I think we're in, in, in a pretty good financial place right now. My recommendation is, is to accept the, the audit as presented and move on to the next year.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Dr. Terry, do you have further comments?
Just again, rave reviews for John and his team. Thank you to Weaver for a great audit again. We appreciate your partnership, and we would tonight recommend accepting the audit as presented.
Thank you, Weaver team, and also John, thank you and your team again. We couldn't do this without you, and this is exactly what all happens behind the scenes that nobody knows. We only get those clean reports of what your team does, so thank you for that. Any further questions from the board? Have a motion from the board?
Ferris, I approve the annual financial audit as presented.
Have a motion, Mr. Johnson, may I have a second, please? Mr. Regan, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. We'll move on then, consideration and possible approval of TASB Policy Update 121 as a first reading. Mr. Rick Gere, Chief of Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris and the Board of Trustees. Welcome to a brief overview of the local policy recommendations included in Update 121 as a first reading. Most districts have a policy, CFB Local, that establishes a threshold or dollar amount for the capitalization of individual assets. Often, a district will purchase an individual item that does not exceed that threshold, yet the cost of a group of those items could be significant. Based on recent guidance from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, a new provision is included for consideration. The new text delegates responsibility to the superintendent to determine the capitalization threshold of, for a group of assets when the individual item cost is below the capitalization threshold currently in the policy. CKE Local has been deleted and replaced by CKEA Local, addressing the district's decision to employ commissioned peace officers. Also in this section, we included a section for body worn cameras, as our peace officers do wear those, so that will be included in CKEA Local. The revisions of CLB Local are prompted by the amendments of the Texas Department of Agricultural Rules Regarding Integrated Pest Management. The new rules add residential property to the district buildings and grounds that are subject to now the integrated pest management requirements. The understanding from TDA is that the inclusion of residential property is intended to apply only to district-owned residential property used primarily as student housing. So Dr. Terry today, we can do anything at the OC, so we better have that, have, better have that in policy. Come on, somebody's got to get a laugh out of that. It's late, right? I get it, I get it, it's late. There are no significant revisions to the text on reasonable assurance in CRF Local. However, the policy template has been included to update to the new adoption date function in policy online, so there really is no changes. Since BJA Local authorizes the superintendent to delegate responsibilities to other district employees as permitted by law, it is not necessary to include a reference to the superintendent's designees in policies CVA and CVB Local. Similar recommendations have already been made in previous updates to other local policies. To eliminate the possibility of confusion about the frequency of pay, there's a recommendation to replace bi-monthly with the more specific and widely used semi-monthly in DEA Local. Other revisions recommended for policy style and to clarify the circumstances under which certain employees will receive premium pay during an emergency closure for disaster. The changes to Policy FD Local provide greater flexibility to the district regarding the proof for residency requirements. The proposed revision would now remove any specific requirements and would instead refer to administrative regulations. Other policy changes are recommended to the transition assistance provision. This revision reflects a repeal and replacement of a Texas Administrative Code rule that addresses the awarding of credit to a student who is homeless or is in substitute or foster care. The new rule now requires the district to adopt a policy to ensure credit has been awarded appropriately prior to the student's enrollment in the district. And last, FFI Local, the revisions to this are recommended to address the minimum standards for bullying prevention that was released by Texas Education Agency. The minimum standards require policy provisions on reporting and monitoring bullying incidents. Please note that the existing policy language addresses students and staff reporting bullying incidents. And that is the conclusion of my Update 21 as a first reading. I'll be glad to entertain any questions. Since nobody laughed at my joke.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. If there's no more questions, we would recommend to move this to consent on our next agenda, I guess our November agenda for a final approval.
I hear none, so Mrs. Elsie, would you please add this to consent agenda for November? Moving on then, item 12, consideration and possible approval of construction bids. Mr. Chase, I think you're back at the microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As indicated, the background memo you received in your board book, administration liked to appropriate some surplus capital project funds for some additional capital improvement needs that we've identified. These funds represent interest earnings on bonds proceeds to date. After deducting the amount of expenses to be paid to the IRS for earnings in excess of, of the amount allowed, we've determined that approximately 11.6 million dollars will be in surplus due to the interest earnings. And so tonight, we would like to appropriate about 8 million of those, would be 8 million of those, not to exceed that anyway, for, for these projects that, that we've identified. And I'll, I'll go through the, the projects that we have here and entertain any questions at the end. But first, first off, we have Wilson Elementary Road Construction, and that's to construct a road that connects Wilson Elementary down to 741. That would be a second alternate road that would, would go down from, from the school sites down to 740, excuse me. This road would be built on property that doesn't, doesn't belong to the school, and so the property owner, when they develop that property, that, they will reimburse us, and we, we're estimating about 75% of the, the road construction cost would be, would be reimbursed at, at the time that they start their development. So the next project would be the Fornie High School locker room renovations. This would be renovation, renovate the existing lockers in the main building, as well as lockers under the visiting bleachers at Citibank Stadium. This would be mostly cosmetic improvements, include painting, floor replacement, locker replacements, ceiling tile replacements and that kind of thing. Next, we'd have the Opportunity Central finish out. That would be the complete unfinished portions of the storm shelter, which would include flooring and painting, a drop ceiling, audio and visual additions. And then we'd also, would do, include some additional furniture and equipment needs at the Opportunity Central. So the next part of the project we've got identified here is North Fornie security improvements, and that would be renovating the front area of North Fornie High School to increase security. And, and at Smith Intermediate School, would be adding an additional perimeter fence to improve security around the outdoor basketball court at that school. And then finally, we've got renovations to the playgrounds at Claybon and Blackburn Elementary Schools. The, the district playgrounds across the district, they're all ADA accessible, however, these two campuses have some special, special needs students that, that would benefit greatly for additional improvements that would make their playground experience more enjoyable. And so in order to increase the, the, the speed of these projects, administration would like to request a purchasing authority on a not to exceed basis. We plan to, to complete these projects using job order cost contracts awarded through one of the purchasing cooperatives that we're a member of. And then finally, we have some FFNE that, that's included in the Wilson Elementary, the, the Warren Middle School and the Temer Middle School budgets, just like in the past, new, new construction projects, we've asked that you would give us a not to exceed budget on, on these projects as well, so it would speed up the, the time that it would take for us to order furniture and, and get those, get those started receiving. The total cost of, of the furniture budgets in those three projects is total 10 million dollars. 3 million of it's in Wilson and the other two, 3 and a half million each for Warren and Temer, for a total of 10 million. And so to put this in a, in a recommendation, I would just, administration would recommend that you approve the previous mention of construction renovation and FFNE purchases totaling 18 million dollars on a not to exceed basis. Again, 8 million of it is for these renovation and construction, and the other 10 million is for FFNE that's already in the project budgets for the three schools that I've mentioned that we're currently constructing. So that's our recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Dr. Terry, any further comments?
I know, sir, just wanted to thank the board for allowing some of this flexibility. We've obviously, we've got still labor and material delivery challenges that we're facing still today. I think Jeff would agree with that, so we would recommend approval of the construction bids as presented.
Any other questions from the board?
Just a quick question. With the, with the line item, grant inclusion playgrounds at Claybon and Blackburn, with those renovations occurring, will that, is that all worth needing to do to make sure that all of our playgrounds across all of our campuses are inclusive? Or is there still other campuses?
So, so all of our campuses right now are ADA compliant. I, I just think there's some, there's some special programs that are located at those two campuses in particular, that, that, they feel that, that having an additional play area for, for these guys, that, that would increase their, their overall playground experience and, and make it more enjoyable for them, as I mentioned before. At the other campuses, I don't think they, they, they have those particular set of challenges, maybe that those two campuses have, is my understanding.
Yes, sir, and we, we are getting to the point with some of our play equipment that it's getting up in age, and so we're going to work as well on kind of prioritizing replacements for some of those as we have some additional funding that we'd come back to the board as well. I think Claybon's getting up to 125.
And it's sort of our older campuses where we also have specific special education units there. We can move, but we don't want to move them there scattered, so let's address the playground in a order that, that's the students would have.
So just to clarify one more time for everybody, that all playgrounds are ADA accessible, but these are improvements and enhancements for those playgrounds.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for clarification. Do I have a motion? Yes, Ms. Bateman?
I'm going to approve the construction bids as presented.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Then closed session, we, we had that earlier tonight, and then moving action from that would be item number 14, consideration and possible approval for ratification of employment of professional contract personnel. Do I have a motion?
Ferris, I approve the employment of professional contract personnel as presented in the closed session.
Have a motion, Mr. Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Regan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Then that takes us to item number 15, announcements. Dr. Terry, I'll turn the mic over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Just a couple of updates here to take note of. First off, we do have an upcoming board meeting on, in November, our regular scheduled meeting normally would be on November 6th. We are moving that, recommend to move that to Thursday, November the 9th. We will have potentially state band competition that day with many board members and administrators out. The second thing I'd like to point out to you is listed as two special call meetings, Thursday, November 16th and Friday, November 17th. The Thursday, November 16th will be our annual attendance zone modification hearing, but also we will need a, to canvas the vote that is up in, on November the 7th. And we will be waiting on the county elections office to submit that canvas to us and get those numbers to us. So if we are able that night to have the election canvassed on the 16th, then we would not need the 17th. However, if we don't have those numbers, voting numbers by the 16th, we'll have to have a very short, brief meeting on the 17th. So I just wanted to clarify why we have so many special calls, that's unusual, and the if needed there is, where that may be canceled meeting if we're able to take action Thursday night. Outside of that, Mr. Ferris, I think we do have some holidays coming up, and I think our staff and students are probably ready for it.
I hear nothing else from the board, we'll call this meeting adjourned at 8:29.